Yes, one, two. Okay, so I am calling the select board meeting to order on August 29th at 7:03 PM. Welcome, everyone. We've got a very focused, short agenda tonight, a very important agenda. So before we get started with the interview of our two candidates for police chief, I wanted to explain to the public what the process is that has gotten us to the point we are at tonight as far as selecting a new police chief. But first, I wanted to thank our town administrator, Mr. Purple, and our assistant town administrator, Ms. Hill, for their assistance in this process. They have both ably guided select board to get to the point we are at tonight. Their experience in this process has been immensely helpful to all of us. The select board decided unanimously to initially engage in the internal search process to select a new chief. If that process did not result in a new chief being appointed, then the search would be expanded to external candidates. In the past, the process to select new public safety chiefs have been both internal and external. There are reasons for both, and we felt in this case that the internal search was warranted. Two current Southborough policemen applied for the chief's position. Lieutenant Ryan Newell, who has been acting chief for the past six months, and Sergeant Sean McCarthy. Each has worked in the Southborough Police Department for many years. The select board sincerely thanks both candidates for engaging this process with us. It is not easy to apply for a job in the public sector. We hired community paradigm to assess all candidates at a cost of $6,000. We also sought input from two local residents who have public safety backgrounds. One is a retired Westboro policeman, Pete Goodney, and one is a current Walton firefighter, Brendan Beer. The assessment center panel consisted of three people, all retirees of relevant public service positions. There were two retired police chiefs and a retired town manager of the panel, two men, one woman. The assessment, excuse me, the assessment process included a written exercise, an oral exercise, and a role play. The select board observed the oral exercise and role play. Upon completion, the assessors prepared a written report to the select board that included their evaluation of each candidate. Tonight is the last step in the internal process. We will interview each candidate separately. Mr. Purple and Ms. Hill have helped the select board prepare a set of 15 questions that will be asked each candidate. Each select board member will ask three questions. After the second interview, the select board will decide whether to vote on the appointment of either candidate as the next chief or sleep on it and come back tomorrow night. If anyone wants to wait until tomorrow night, that is what we will do. When and if we appoint a new chief, we will enter into executive session to start the process of negotiating the new chief's contract. We will allow public comment before we vote tonight, if we decide to vote tonight. If we decide to wait until tomorrow, tomorrow night, we will allow public comment at the end of the meeting. There will be no public comment tomorrow night. And also to make clear, you will not be able to view this meeting tonight live on YouTube like we normally do, but it will be posted later tonight so that you can see it tomorrow, and you do have access per Zoom. All right, so with that, let's get started.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant McCarthy. To get started today, we would like you to share with us your plan for the first 90 days if you are hired as Southborough's next police chief.
I would be happy to. The first 90 days as police chief, really, you have to get used to your new role, and people have get to used to you in your new role. They have to understand that you have a new position, and now you have to set clear and concise expectations. And in that time, you really have to do a litmus test and really speak with everyone in the department from top to bottom, from left to right, and really get all their input into what we want to do going forward. And that's not only just with department members internally, but it's also intra-departmental. I was talking with the fire chief, the DPW at school departments. And that's going to take a little bit of time. And in that time, we're also going to reach out to the community and the stakeholders and everybody else in the community so I can get their input into what we're going to do with this department. Because as a chief of police, it's not your department or my department. This is our department, and we have to do it together.
So Sergeant McCarthy, we've got 15 questions we're going to ask you.
Okay.
Each member is going to ask three questions. Four of us are here. Ms. Brashio is going to ask her question.
Oh, she's answering, sorry, hi Lisa.
Okay, we're asking the same set of questions to both candidates.
Okay.
So here we go, so we're going to rotate five of us for each set of questions. So Andrew.
So, good evening, Sergeant McCarthy. Hi. Please describe two specific accomplishments in your local government law enforcement career that you consider to be the most significant.
First, I'm very proud of the fact, if you like, to pick from. I think becoming a leader in the training division was a significant accomplishment for me. I was put in front of training for the entire department. And when you take on a new position, you don't always know exactly everything that you're going to be handling, what you're going to be working with. And in that position, I took over, and we had a platform, a computer platform called PMAM HMC, which is our policy and training platform. And I didn't know much about it. I wasn't a huge computer guy. But I took it over, and I made a program of my own through input through everyone in the department, and we started utilizing it better. And I've been doing that now for about two and a half years, and I worked so hard on the implementation of this program for accreditation and tracking that, believe it or not, I was asked to be on the company's advisory board. So now I'm working with six, seven other law enforcement executives around the nation to craft this program to work better for all the agencies around the country. But what's nice about that is I can be selfish, right? I can ask to make it specifically tailored towards the town of Southborough. So that was a big accomplishment. Another large accomplishment. I wasn't going to talk about being a DRE, but I think one of my favorite accomplishments since being in leadership position here is just leading and recruiting. And I used to have a mentor of mine, so I used to go down to the CrossFit gym here in Southborough on Southford Road. I was a member there for about five or six years. And I had a mentor there, and he was my coach. And he was helping me to become better through physical fitness and this and that. And I really noticed that his core values were great. He was a great person. So we started to become friends, and he really got interested in law enforcement. And so I said, hey, I can help you. Let's, let's see if you want to get into law enforcement. And he was going out looking for jobs all around the state, and I was helping him to do that. And I was like, man, he would really be a good fit for Southborough. And he did. He ended up coming here. We helped him. He got through Officer Jeff Norton. He's a newer officer, but he's already excelling. He's already the senior citizen liaison. He's becoming a school resource officer. So I know that's not really a technical something that I've achieved, but I'm very proud to work with people and people from our community and bring them into the department, if that works.
Lisa.
Good evening, Sergeant McCarthy. Please explain how you would plan to keep the town administrator and the select board informed about projects, problems, and issues. Provide examples of techniques you have successfully used in the past. Thank you.
Okay, well, it all comes down to communication, really. Informal, informal communication is important. And it has to be done with a strategic plan. And I have a strategic plan in mind and a strategic budget, and those are things that you really have to focus on because you have to look at the short-term goals, the mid-range goals, and the long-term goals. And we really have to work together with that and decide where we want to go and how we want to do it. And we have to do it together because one person or one unit can't do it. Because I understand that while as a chief of police, you know, I have a 30,000-foot view over at the police department. I can see where we have deficiencies at. I can see where we're great through input and everybody else telling me this. But I also have to realize that the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, and the select board, while I have a 30,000-foot view, you guys have 100,000-foot view. So like, if I need resources, and I know we have finite fiscal resources because we're a responsible town, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer. I know that when I'm asking for something, that it has to be together, and we have to come to an agreement so we can move forward for the same goal and same purpose.
Thank you. Sam.
Good evening, Sergeant McCarthy.
Thank you.
The department will have a vacancy based on who is appointed chief. Describe what qualities you'd look for in command staff candidates during the promotional process. And what other individuals would you ask to assist you in this process?
Well, first, the assistants, I would want to have input from everybody because I think inclusion is very important because everyone's opinion really does matter. It's not, it's not years ago where the top couple of people in a department make decisions for the entire group. Everybody needs to be included, and input needs to be taken from everyone. What characteristics would I look for? Somebody that's self-disciplined, somebody that can hold themselves accountable, someone that's maybe a transformational leader. They like to help others grow and mentor them to become better versions of themselves. I mean, we have many members of our department, almost all members of our department that fit that mold. So we're very lucky here at this organization. Thank you. You're welcome.
Chelsea. Thank you, Sergeant McCarthy. Do you have any experience with regional dispatch for police and fire? What do you think are the challenges and or opportunities?
I have experience. I ran our dispatch division for three years. And in that, it's kind of like its own culture within the police department. It's really a whole division, right? You have people, you have training. You have grants. I wrote grants to get resources for that. Now, with regionalized dispatch, I do have friends that are obviously in the industry. A lot of my childhood friends are also police officers, firefighters that have regional dispatch. There are goods and bads to everything, and obviously we have to talk about that. But the good things about regional dispatch would be staffing and training. I mean, that takes up a lot of money and a lot of time, and that would be good for regional dispatch. Another reason it's good for regional dispatch would be equipment items. You know, we're going to have to replace a water tower, have to replace some stuff for our radio system because our radio system has longevity costs. So those are two outstanding reasons why to look towards it. Some other downsides that there may be, I mean, we don't really want to have a dark dispatch. That's something that the community is going to have to put their input into. Do you want to walk into a station and have a, you know, a button that you press that calls an officer and off the road? I really hate to see no one in there. So you might have to replace dispatchers with officers or civilians. So it might not be something that's so even back and forth fiscally. So I'm open to it, but I really want to get the input from the people in this department, the input from the people in the town, and the dispatchers themselves because they're great employees, and we care about them, and they have to know that.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm next. This is a little bit long, so hang with me here.
Sure.
As a police chief, one of your greatest roles will be overseeing the budget of the police department. Please illustrate what analysis we will utilize to maximize the operations of the department while staying within fiscal constraints. Just discuss how you would manage the overtime line item in a year that put excessive demands on the overtime line item because of community needs.
Sure. Great question. Well, you have to do it. You have to stay on it, you know? You can't, you can't look at something every couple of months. You have to really track it almost on a weekly basis. You know, you have to look at, you have to, you know, I would definitely lean on Cindy McCloud. She's awesome. She really understands our budget. And we know that we have a certain burn rate that we have to look at when officers are taking time off, when officers are calling in, or wherever it may be. You know, you have to look at that on a weekly basis, look at the metrics, look at the monthly trends, see how it's going. And obviously, at the end of the year, go back and say, hey, how did we get here? Where did we come from, and why is it like this? You know, hopefully, we're going to be within the fiscal guidelines of the budget. But if there was any chance that we were going to go outside of that, you would have to be told about that way in advance. There should be no surprises to the community or to you saying, hey. I mean, if you manage your budget, you managed it correctly, you're going to spend that money for what you asked for because otherwise you're asking for too much. You don't need extra money if you're not going to spend it. So you shouldn't be giving money back at the end of the year. You should really use your budget rates the line if you can. Now, our overtime budget is right around $148,000, give or take, you know, a couple dollars here and there. And we do have some things we would have to discuss because it is extremely finite. What we did about three years ago was necessary. We went from a two-officer minimum to a three-officer minimum. I mean, we had to do that. Having two offices on the road just isn't safe for the community. It's not safe for the officers. But we brought it up to the staffing level of three. Now, that's great, but our overtime budget really is going to those operational costs solely at this point, you know, the backfill. And what that did was that took away our opportunity for more training. We need more training, and the way we do that is through the overtime budget. You know, I have brought in training to this room from outside from Municipal Police Institute and bought an outstanding trainers, and we've had them here and other communities come here to train. And we've had two free seats, so that's free training for us. But we didn't have the money that we could actually send officers to the training in this building to get free training because it wasn't in the overtime budget. So that's just one thing that, you know, I would like to discuss a little bit more. But like I said, it's constant communication, and you have to have, you know, transparency, not only within the department and with the public, but with leaders in this town. It's not fair for you to, to have somebody that identifies a key issue and doesn't bring it to you because you have to know because that's how you mitigate risk. You know, I've worked here for 18 years now, and you know, I'll hear an officer say like, this thing's been broken forever. Does anyone care about this? It's like, well, have you told anyone about it? Well, no, I haven't, Sergeant. Okay, I'll take care of it. So you really have to let the leadership know what needs to be fixed, and you can't shy away from that. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Andrew.
What are the critical elements of training officers to handle calls when they are faced with a mental health emergency? And how would you utilize mental health professionals on these calls?
Icat training is really important. It's integral communication training, and it has to do with mental health calls. And, you know, it's, I always like to say it's officer, it's officer safety first, and you have to go into it thinking that way. However, when you go into one of those situations, you really have to understand that a person is in a mental crisis. It's not, it's not a criminal situation, so we're there just to help. And you have to use tactics and negotiation skills so that you can try to help that person and get them to the hospital and the help they need. Now, we do have a GATP program which has been outstanding for us, and they are trained at a much higher level than we are to deal with mental health. You know, we go in, we make sure the scene's secure, and we let Carly come in and do her thing, and it's been great. But more training is needed, and like I said, to get that Icat training or to get that mental health training, we would need to talk about increasing the overtime budget. I know it's not popular for someone sitting in this chair to say, but it's, it's a necessary thing that needs to be done.
Lisa.
Thank you. Recruiting, recruiting and retaining police officers is a major challenge for today's police leaders. What are the effective recruiting methods for police departments, and what strategies could contribute to improved employee retention?
It really comes down to identifying our main core values and who we employ and make sure that they're in alignment with our organizational goals, not only so our individual goals match our organizational goals. And when you have that, you can build relationships, and in those relationships, you can build partnerships. And when you do that, you create an inspired workforce. And if you can do that, there's synergy. And you have to make sure that the people you're hiring are the people that need to represent the town, represent the department, and everyone in this, in this area. There's a lot of things we can do for recruiting. I mean, just like I talked about Officer Norton, every day we have opportunities to recruit ourselves. You know, we go out in the community, you make contact with a citizen. It's going to be positive, negative, or neutral. And hopefully, it's always going to be positive. But you don't have to look for somebody that, you can find them in the strangest places, maybe at a gym. Or maybe you go into a Starbucks, and you see someone behind the counter. It's like, hey, have you thought about being a police officer? We're our own best recruitment. I really do believe that. And we have to have places to look, and what better place than right here in our own community to represent our community? There's other things that we can do through social media, and you know, I talked to a mentor and a friend of mine, and he is actually, he was the dean of multicultural affairs over at Framingham State. He was just actually made into the HR director for Framingham State. So I talked to him and said, if we need to recruit some people here, could we get into your pipeline of criminal justice students at Framingham State so that, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and you can say, hey, we have hiring opportunities, and we would love to have that. I mean, they're right next door. So I mean, there's all kinds of things we can do. We can always work harder, and we communicate more. But yeah, I have a lot of ideas for that, and it's, I think that recruitment and retention and career development of employees are the number one thing a police leader can do for any community.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is a two-part question. You actually have had head start on this from your earlier. You have to do more than that one. First, please provide some examples of how you have mentored or taught others, and what was the outcome of your efforts. Second, what training or development do you think is important to develop a succession plan as officers transition through the department?
See, trail up. First part of your question had to do with mentoring?
Yes.
Well, mentoring is a great thing, and it's something that I love to do. Mentoring works in a bunch of different ways. You know, when you come into the department, it's not always top-down mentoring from the top to the bottom, but you have to be willing to do reverse mentoring. And everybody has to work towards that common goal. And when you get to put your time and effort into growing people, it's very fulfilling. And, you know, you have to also think, you know, we have so many different generations working here. I think we probably have four generations working in our police department now. We have our boomers, we have our X-gens, we have our millennials, and we have our I-gens or zoomers, I guess you could call it. And it's not hard to say, listen, I may be Generation X, but I know that this millennial or this I-gen knows so much more about social media than I do. So, hey, could you teach me that? So you can't have an ego when you mentor. It goes both directions. I think that was a great question. The second part had to do with.
Succession plan, what do you, what do you need for training to have.
Oh, okay. Well, leadership training is, is huge because every member of our police department is a leader in their own right. They're, you know, regardless of rank or title, every person that works here is a leader for our community. So you need to have leadership training, and leadership training is so important. It's, it's something that I've practiced, and I've looked at, and I've studied. And the thing about being a leader is, especially a chief of police or lieutenant or sergeant, nobody owns that leadership position. It's merely rented, and the rent that you pay is the development and growth of leaders to replace you when you're ready to leave. Thank you. You're welcome.
Police, community relations are particularly strained right now across our country. In your current role in the department, what steps have you taken to address issues of race inequity? As chief, what actions would you take to address these issues in our community?
Well, I think we would have already identified that situation through our common core values and development of our why because any type of bias is not welcome here. It's not something that we tolerate. We would have to really look at inclusion and a lot more training. And like, I know I keep stressing training, and I know I'm in charge of training, but training is so important. I mean, unconscious bias and implicit bias, it's a real thing. You know, we're human beings. Everybody has a bias, you know? And the important thing is that you can identify those biases. I just read a great book last year called A Leader's Guide to Unconscious Bias. I'd say take a look at it if you could. And it really talked about a lot of that and why, you know, your brain processes 11 million units of information. I don't go too deep into it, but cognitively you can only do 40. So in your neural pathways, it's making shortcuts. And you have to be able to figure out and identify issues that you have so that you can make sure that you can obtain to procedural justice because everyone deserves, deserves to be treated the same way, and everyone deserves to have transparency. And that is something that if I'm leading this department, I will continue with and continue to mentor because as you grow and as you learn, it only helps if you share that with other people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The mental and physical health of every employee within the department is critically important. In your current police role, what steps have you taken to address employee wellness? First question. Second one is, as chief, what actions would you take to support the mental and physical health of Southborough Police Department employees?
Great question. I am a huge proponent of physical health and mental health, spiritual health, just well-being in general. I love well-being. And what have I done here? You know, I helped design this beautiful gym that we have. That's great. And in doing that, we've implemented a workout program. And that workout program, you know, I've went and I've actually hired individuals to program for us so that we can train. You know, we can train for 45 minutes or so on shift and really get anything out we need to because I think that physical health really coincides with mental health. And if you give time to the people that are in this organization, that's going to make them better, whole-rounded people. And that's going to make them go out on the street, and they're going to treat people like they should be treated because if you can lead yourself and you can be mentally aware and self-aware, and you can really look into these things, and, you know, I'd probably be embarrassed to say this about 10 years ago, but I really started getting into like mindfulness and yoga and meditation. And it's just very important. It's, it's something that I strive to do in our department in my current role, and it's something that I will keep doing forever because I think that health and wellness is so important because you have to keep people stable. And, you know, I would even go as far as working with the union and trying to figure out during contract negotiations, can we figure out maybe we can give the officers a day off? And in that day off, could you please at least go get a physical? Because you have to get physical. You know, and it helps to identify things before it happens. Or if you want to go talk to a mental health counselor, but can't be any stigma when it comes to mental health. It's just, it's not a good look, and it's not what we're driving to do here. So, I mean, financial planning, there's so much we could do for our officers and stuff here that would help them be better systems, help them be better offices. It's something that I'm hyper-focused on and something that I would not let lapse going forward.
Andrew.
Thank you. It is often said, you shouldn't take a job that does not scare you in some way, shape, or form. So, three questions.
Okay.
What scares you about taking this job? Conversely, what are you most looking forward to? Where do you think your greatest learning curve lies?
Okay, so the first question. What scares me about taking this job?
What are you most looking forward to, and where do you think your greatest learning curve lies?
All right, I'm going to start with the first one. I might have to ask you follow-up to get the second one. Sure. What scares me the most about taking this job? It's a good question. I think that the thing that concerns me the most about taking this job is that I would have to be the exception to the rule when it came to nationwide, police chiefs generally last three to five years. I mean, that's, that's their shelf life generally. And, you know, I would have to be the exception to that rule because I don't want to move on to somewhere else. I don't want to, I want to be in, I mean, I'm, I'm from Southborough. I live here. I love this town. I never, I've never wanted to work at any other police department. And say I became chief of police, and then three to five years, and they, bitch, you did a great job, but, you know, you're going to have to move on and go to a bigger agency or whatever. I would have a very hard time with that. So I would be fearful that I couldn't stay in Southborough for my entire life and my entire career because this is where I want to be. What was the second part of that question?
What are you most looking forward to?
Challenge. I love challenge. I love living outside of my comfort zone. It's just where I like to be. You know, whether it's doing physical fitness or mental health training or, you know, intellectual training. I'm a huge proponent of education. You know, I got my master's degree from UMass Lowell. And while I did that, I also decided I wanted to get a graduate certificate in leadership and policy development. It's really helped me with strategic planning and that type of stuff. And actually, I actually was accepted into a doctoral program for criminal justice a few months back. And I was going to start this week, actually, but I deferred my enrollment because this opportunity came, came to be. So that's my second part to that question. And then what was the third?
The third is, where do you think your greatest learning curve lies?
Greatest learning curve? That's a great question. I mean, I think you don't know what you don't know. You know, I think that sounds kind of strange. But anytime you take a new position, there are obstacles that you face and things that you may not be able to plan for. I mean, you can strategic plan all day long, and you can have things set up, but you have to be fluid too because those strategic plans can change at the blink of an eye because you don't know what's happening and going on. So I guess I don't know what I don't know. For a short answer.
Lisa.
Thank you. What types of programs and relationships would you build with our schools and other community sectors such as the seniors?
I think we have a good program going, but we do need to have more. I would love to have as much more involvement with the schools. Currently, we have a part-time school resource officer. I think we need dedicated school resource officers. I think that's just huge for not only for our children to get in contact with police officers and be involved, but I think that it's something that we really need to look into, and that would have to be something in our strategic plan going forward that we all could agree on. For our seniors, I mean, we really can do a lot. No, we do a lot right now where we go to the senior center talk, but we can do it more. And our department can do a lot more open door, you know, drop in with the chief, drop in with lieutenant, drop in, let's talk. Let's, let's see what's going on out there and see what can we do for you. So I can't answer you exactly what I would want to do for the seniors without talking to the seniors. And I couldn't tell you exactly what I want to do for the school. And I couldn't tell you exactly what I want to do for the school system without taking input from the school system. Because it's really a holistic view that we have to use to go forward. So while I have ideas. They're not full circle yet until I speak to everybody involved. And I'm not trying to skirt the question or anything like that. But I think that, that input from everybody and that inclusion is so important that I don't want to give you an answer. That is not something that the school department's on board with or not something that the seniors want. Because I don't want to waste resources somewhere if it's not needed or not wanted. So I really want to pull those individuals and say, what can we do for you? I mean, we work for them. That's, that's what we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here's what I hope is a very hypothetical question.
Okay.
Assume that the select board, uh, structured to implement a new policy and you don't agree with it. You think it's a bad idea, but you do.
Great question. Okay, so if that did happen, I think we'd have to work on our communication, um, and talk about it. And now, I mean, I have a ton of follow-up questions I would like to ask you, but I won't put you through that. Um, if it came down to it, you know. I understand authority. You know, I am a police officer. Uh, I'm a voting citizen. I understand that. So in the leadership role, um, you don't always like what you have to do, but. If, now what was, what was the issue with the policies? Is it just that we didn't like it or?
You think it's a bad idea?
Oh, it's a bad idea?
Whatever reason.
Okay. Well. I would have to make sure it was a bad idea after speaking with everyone about it. If it was surely a bad idea, it had something to do with officer safety or something that could hurt this town. We would talk about it at length, you know, and from every angle we could to make sure we were doing was right for the citizens. But if it was something that maybe I just didn't like, you know, because maybe it was something personal that I didn't like, well, that's, that's, that's for me to put forward. If that's what the leadership of this town wants going forward, we have to stay aligned because that's the message we have to send to the community and to the people within our agency. So as long as it was nothing that was going to damage our community or damage or hurt our officers. Um, I would implement what you want, um, but we would talk quite a bit about it, if that's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Southborough Police Department will soon be implementing body cameras. What policies and procedures surrounding body cameras would be important to you as chief regarding this rollout?
I welcome body cameras very much so, and I think our union does too, which is great. Um. There's a lot of stuff that we have to think about, uh, prior to implementing body cameras. There's a lot of things that, uh, you know, I've already gathered a lot of policies on it. And reviewed it because of, uh, being involved with the predation and such. But there's stuff that we have to not only educate our offices on, but educate the community on. I mean, there's some places that are saying, you know. Sanctity of people's homes, we don't, we can't walk in with a body camera on. You have to turn it off. There's all types of stuff with training and education that you have to do. And not only the implementation of body cameras that I have to look into, we have to look into the logistical resources it's going to take to run that. I mean, my friends over in Westboro who just implemented it, it's a whole new world. They need a whole new staffing division. Because not only do you take your input, you have to get it ready for court. You have to store it. You have to make sure somebody's on it. It's almost a full-time job managing that asset to make sure that it's ready to go to court. So. Um, I would have to make sure that things were in place because like I said, I would want to stay responsibly fiscal to our budget. And I would hate to say, yeah, let's bring this program in and then get blinds out and say, hey, I didn't realize that this might cost us actually $30,000 in overtime. It's something that we really need to discuss and digest together, um, in a multifaceted way.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So hanging with me again, I've got another one. There's only one question, sir. All right, so an effective chief needs to deal fairly objectively and consistently with members of the department and with the public. Any internal candidate brings a history of personal relationships with department colleagues and with the public to the position of chief. How will you ensure that these relationships will not get in the way of your ability to work fairly objectively and consistently? With the individuals and issues you will need to deal with as chief?
Okay, another good question. Um. I'm not foreign to being promoted. Um, you know, every time you take a new role, you have to identify new clear boundaries and, um. You know, I've had the opportunity that I was a part-time dispatcher and I made it to part-time police officer, made it to police officer, detective, sergeant. And then all the different roles I had with FTO, drug recognition expert, and every single one of these roles. You really have to set your expectations and hold yourself accountable. And I don't think that would be an issue for the people that have developed racial, uh, relationships with and mentorships within the department. And I don't think it would be an issue for me in the town because with the citizens of this town, I am a citizen of this town. And I've been dealing with that for the last 18 years that I've been a police officer here. I mean, I see people every day that I deal with internally, externally. And it's, it's always pleasantries. And even if it's something that we have to do where, you know, I may have to arrest somebody that I know in town and, and I've done it before. And then I might see them at the soccer field like three days later. And it's always just depends on how you treat people. If you treat people with respect and dignity, they're gonna remember that. And, you know, I remember one of the biggest compliments that I thought I got when I was a young officer was I ended up giving somebody a $350 speeding ticket. Which I like to educate more than that, but if somebody has done something three times in the same area, they're just not quite learning. So I gave that person like a $350 speeding ticket. And after I did, that person said, thank you. And I said, wow, I said, that is a compliment. If you can actually try to promote positive change through that enforcement. And still say thank you, you must be treating people pretty good. So, uh, that's where I'll go with that one.
Okay, um, that's 15 questions.
Oh.
And so, um, if you would like to, you can take this opportunity for a closing statement. Or provide any other information that you see would be beneficial for the select board to know beyond what is in your resume.
Okay, um. Well, I think that I bring a lot of unique, um, perspectives to the position of chief of police. Um, I'm the fourth generation Southwood resident. My kids are fifth generation. I grew up here. I went through the school system. Um, my wife Tina. She, um, works for Youth and Family Services. She's also a town employee. Um, I live in town. I'm a taxpayer. All these things that helped me mold my worldview of what's going on at the time. Um, I've done a lot. I've been very lucky in that I have. One of my leadership tendencies, you have to bloom where you're planted. And being a dispatcher, being a police officer, drug recognition expert, where I actually get to testify in court as to my opinion, not just the facts. Um, I've had a great career and I've loved every second of it. I've had my dream job since 2004, when I got hired here by Chief Weber. And no matter what role I'm in, it's always been my dream job. Um, and I guess I'll just end with a short story to sum up, I think, why I'm here. Um, when I was a kid in town, I got in a little bit of trouble. I got in a little bit of trouble and. I went home to my father and I said, hey dad, you know, I did something I think was a little bit mischievous. And he said, all right. We're going down to 19 Main Street and I'm gonna walk you in there and you're gonna tell the officers what you did. And whatever comes to you is gonna come to you. Okay dad. So he brings me down. I'm a young scared kid. I don't know really what's going on. And I walk into that lobby and I see dispatcher Joe Bennett and Ricky Mattioli. And you know, guys that I worked with and that are great mentors to me from that day. Anyway, doors behind me open up and it's Detective Willis. He's what, Sergeant Willis now. And he took me in and I went in and I told him everything that had happened. He wasn't a huge deal, just that. And, um, between him and Sergeant Weber and Chief Cleary, you know, I got a little community service. So I had to do community service for the town. And for, you know, a couple of weeks, a couple of months, whatever it may have been, I'd go into 19 Main Street. And I would clean cruisers and I would clean, uh, the station, whatever they needed me to do. And in that time, I realized I wanted to be a Southwood police officer. These, the people that worked here were great and I never want to be a federal agent, a state trooper or. Any other local officer. I had the opportunity, but this is where I always wanted to be. And I think that was made Southwood Police so special to me. And this community as a whole has made me who I am. You know, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for all the community members that I've known, my neighbors, my friends. So now fast forward 25 years of being that scared kid to not really know what's going on in my life. Now I'm interviewing for the chief of police position at that police department. That's not a testament to me. That's a testament to the men and women who came before me that I work with now. And I'll be working hopefully in the future and just, uh, the members of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant McCarthy. Um, for doing this.
Yeah. Thank you. My pleasure.
Does anyone need a break? Because we reserve the next 15 minutes to, um, take a break. There's nothing else on the agenda, so will you take a break or?
Yeah, we keep going.
We said eight or four hours, so. We probably should stick with our schedule because that's what we, so we've got a little bit of a break here.
Okay. So are you, do you think we should take a recess or?
Yeah. Well, there's nothing else on the agenda to discuss.
That's correct.
Right. So I don't have a whole lot else.
Did Mark just go to get the next campaign or?
Yeah, so we, we're gonna start at eight, like we said.
Okay.
Okay, so we can take a break. All right, so then we will pass it. So we ready? So welcome back to Chief Cool. Um, so what we're going to do tonight is ask you 15 questions. We're gonna give you a chance to give us an opening statement. And a closing statement. We are rotating the questions among the five of us one at a time. So each person's gonna ask you three questions. So you want to start off with a, uh, brief opening statement and, um. Share with us your plan for the first 90 days if you are hired as Southborough's new police chief.
Okay, uh, opening statement. Thank you all very much for having me here tonight. It's great to see you all. Um, I really appreciate, uh, being in this process and it's such an honor and, uh, it's really appreciate being here. Um, I've been with the Southwood Police Department for over 20 years now. It's a great department and a great town. I feel like I am part of this town, even though I don't live in town. Um, my whole work environment has been this town. And I've grown with this department and I can't wait to continue growing in, uh, this new role as the, uh, as a chief. The first 90 days, um. Seeing as, uh, I've been in the position since February and I, I've done a lot already. Uh, I, when I came into the position, I didn't want to be a placeholder. I wanted to actively show the town, uh, what I wanted to do with this position. And, uh, and immediately I began establishing relationships, uh, with the town committees and community members. And, you know, the, the senior center, the school, did the lunch take back. We certainly went into the schools and served lunch to the kids. Um, it's just right off the bat, I wanted to let everybody know who I was and that this department was in good shape. And that we have great officers that work for us. And, um, so first 90 days, uh, from this point on. Um, I'm actively working with the schools for training for, um, everything from active shooter in, in that result. Um, I am still working with the senior center, the, the senior citizen liaison officers that they established. And, um, we have some great events. We did, uh, get on board with them already. Um, which was a, a great hit. I had about 12 of my officers came and took questions from senior citizens. Um, I'm gonna be working on a, the policy for the body, one body one cameras. Uh, because want to get that up and running and, uh, working on a grant right now for that. And so, gonna get this grant in order, hopefully get some money for that and then start to get the program in, in, and work with that. And then right off the bat, I'm gonna have a, a department meeting, meet with my officers, you know, uh, and then have. Individual meetings with each of the officers to go over expectations and plans for the department. So.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please describe two specific accomplishments in your local government law enforcement career that you consider to be the most.
I would say the certification and then actively, and then going right into the accelerated program of the predivation. In 2018, I, I was able to. Get us right into that full predination within one year, which was a huge accomplishment. And when the team came and did our assessment, they said that they've never had. Uh, a department have, have zero corrections to be made, uh, which I thought was great. And, you know, at the time I got some great accolades for that. So I appreciate that. And then also, uh, making lieutenant, um, I felt, I, I feel like lieutenant is such an important role in this department. Uh, when I made that lieutenant coming off of the sergeant, being a sergeant for 15 years. And then being in the admin and the operations part of this department. Uh, it was great to be involved in the decision-making. So those two accomplishments, uh, I feel really strongly is the ones that stick out.
Thank you.
And then Lisa is zooming in, so we're gonna start with Lisa next.
Hey Lisa.
Good evening. How are you acting chief? No, thank you for being here tonight. Um, please explain how you would plan to keep the town administrator and select board informed about projects, problems and issues. Provide examples of techniques you have successfully used in the past. Thank you.
Um, sure. Uh, I would obviously keep in constant communication with the town administrator. Um, I have done that in the past. Um, whether it's we need to fill some positions within the department, I've reached out. Um, to the town administrator, you know, we've had some part-time dispatcher positions open up. And that way I make him aware. I also, uh, at one point I sent a group email to the select board. Um, you know, we, we had, uh, a, one of our Chinese-speaking officers. Go to a call and he was able to really assist, um, a, a resident that spoke Mandarin, only Mandarin, and he was able to show up on scene and give. Uh, give aid to that person with the fire department immediately. Uh, so I was acknowledging the accolades, uh, the good achievements of my offices, which I think is important. So those are the types of things that I want to share with you all, um, the good things that my department's doing. And through, um, the town administrator, I can continue to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
This department will have a vacancy based on who's appointed chief. Uh, describe what qualities you look for in command staff candidates during the promotional process. And what other individuals would you ask to assist you in this process?
Um, for this position, you know, the lieutenant is a very important position. I remember you Sam, when I was running for lieutenant, we're going from lieutenant, you came to the department and asked to speak to me. And you want to get to know me because it's such an important position going forward. Uh, because it's the second in command for the department. So with that being said, the lieutenant handles the operations, the admin part of the job. Uh, I want somebody that's gonna be very organized, uh, educated and has a good ability. I'm sorry, a great, a great ability to get along with others and work and communicate with the other officers in the department. I think it's very important that if a directive comes down from the chief, you have your second in command who's able to explain it. And go through the process of what needs to be done. Um, and they're kind of like the sounding board and they. They're basically gonna be the person to get things done for you. So, you know, I would be looking for somebody that's gonna be able to, to handle that type of volume of work. And, um, individuals to help me with that. Obviously, the town administrator would be a great help with that. I would actually also reach out to the fire department, fire chief and incorporate other, other opinions and, and, you know, uh. Thoughts on who they think would be a good candidate because again, we're all working hand in hand and showing up on calls together. Side by side. So they're gonna see a different side of somebody that I may not see from the office. So. It's gonna be a, a, you know, a big position to fill. I want to make sure it's done correctly. So.
Thank you.
Do you have any experience with regional dispatch for police and fire? What do you think are the challenges and or opportunities?
I do not have any experience with it. I have been to view an actual, um. Regional dispatch facility down in Foxborough. Uh, that was a beautiful facility, uh, very professionalized. And, uh, I, I really thought they did a great job when they did, when they did a presentation for us and everything. Um, and then what was the second?
Um, what do you think the challenges and opportunities?
Uh, the challenges would be, as we discussed before, figuring out what to do if, if that was to take place in Southborough. Um, with the lobby area and coming in, sort of coming in. Um, but I think that, you know, that's something that we can definitely figure out together and with feedback. And, um. What was the second?
Opportunities.
Yeah, opportunities. I think it definitely professionalized the, the, um, the profession itself. I think that it would, uh. Give us, uh, more manpower, more backup. give us more manpower, more backup for if there's an emergency that happens, all everything happens at once. So.
Thank you. As a police chief, one of your greatest roles will be overseeing the budget of the police department. Please illustrate what analysis you will utilize to maximize the operations of a department while staying within financial restrictions and constraints. Discuss how you would manage the overtime line item in a year that put excessive demands on the force or community needs.
Yeah, um, so it's actually funny. I actually enrolled in a budget class. I have a three day class coming up in November. So that I'm looking forward to. I had limited access to the budget with the previous chief. But if I was taking that on as the current chief, I would have quarterly meetings with with Cindy, who's the business administrator. And we've actually done this where we sit down and go over what's already been spent, what we need to watch, what line items we have to worry about and what we have going forward. So I already have a great working relationship with her in establishing what we need to do for this department and keep it running the way it has been. So in the second.
How would you manage overtime budget?
Obviously, just keep track of it. I have a great department of officers that not everything has to be overtime. I've I've asked if they want to be a part of something, if they want to come in to volunteer and they have done that on their own. If there is overtime that we need to use, I would just have to limit the amount of officers that we could afford to pay for that. Something I would keep an eye on.
Okay, Andrew.
What are the critical elements of training officers to handle calls when they are faced with a mental health emergency? And how would you utilize mental health professionals on these calls?
So we had a JDP clinician that worked with Southborough, Northborough and Westborough. Westborough was the grant, they had received the grant. And this year they decided that they're going to go along on that grant. So when I found this out, I immediately applied to the DPH for another grant so that we could be the host agency and it brought Northborough in so that they could participate in as well. So we're actively, we've been through the grant process, DPH has received it. And now we're just waiting for a clinician for them to start the train. It has been a major asset for the department to have these JDP clinicians on scene available to help us, including doing incel assessments where they come into the cell area. If a prisoner says they want to commit suicide or whatever it may be, they can come in and determine right then and there if this person needs to be transported to the hospital. But my offices, we do training and de-escalation, I think, you know, recognizing if somebody is going through a mental health crisis versus if this is something assaulted with violence in nature. Yes, we have an annual policy review of our handling the mentally ill policy, which we do through our online system, a PMAN system. And it's a constant training. And then if I see training that's advertised for handling mental health calls, we also do those, I send my officers to those trains. We're also very lucky to have this facility, this training room here, because any training that's held here for hosting, we can have an extra seat, one or two seats. So those are the trainings that I look for.
Lisa.
Thank you. Recruiting and retaining police officers is a major challenge for today's police leaders. What are the effective recruiting methods for police departments and what strategies could contribute to improved employee retention?
So I'll start the the last part of that question. Strategies to retain, I think, is is creating an environment that people want to work in. Morale is a huge issue. And if you don't address morale, things can go south. So you want to create a department that feels like a family. And I think that we've done that here. Since I've been acting chief, there's been a market market difference in morale. Morale is is very high right now. And and again, it comes back to we have some great officers that work here. And when you have officers that want to work here, especially some of your older officers, and then we hire new officers, they're the ones that are going to keep them here, keep them happy, keep them in place. So again, it's just it's it's listening to people. It's being here and creating an environment that people want to work in. And recruiting and retaining. So I had some ideas for recruiting. I think that we should create a recruiting recruitment officer. Somebody that will go to some of the area colleges like West, I'm sorry, Worcester State, Birmingham State, some of these area colleges that have CJ degrees and go to the the job fairs that they sometimes go on. And you know, this department has so much to offer. I think if we go to some of these job fairs with with a list of things that our department offers, I think that we're going to have more candidates that would want to sign on to this department versus another department. We have a brand new facility. Some of these departments that are looking for officers have older depart, older buildings. You know, beautiful fleet of cruisers and officers that they get along and like to work together. So I believe it's important that we go to, we start that funnel from education, officers that can be educated that will come to our department and work for us. And that stops the job, that starts the job firms. But also I believe in going like there's career days as well in high school. And that's part of something that like a recruitment officer can go to a career day and talk about the job, you know. I've been to colleges myself when I was a sergeant. I went back to my alma mater at Stonehill and talked to a whole state, like a whole classroom full of students, CJ students and told them how great the job was. And I think we need to bring back that the the appeals of this job and go to the people that that have these CJ's agree and want to be in this field. So.
Sam.
Thank you. Please provide some examples of how you have mentored or taught others and what was the outcome of your efforts? And second, what training or development do you think is important in developing a succession plan as officers transition through the department?
So I always believed in having every position should be too deep. Meaning that you should have the person who's doing the position and then just have somebody that's able to shadow that person. So if something were ever to happen to that person or they decide to transfer out of the department, they'll have somebody with at least some of the the job knowledge and capabilities and what what that position entails. And that's something I've always done, especially as a lieutenant. I've I've made sure that, you know, we have a succession plan within each position. Whether it's, you know, the court officer, I have him showing the detective how to download videos from from seller area and things like that where if if he were to leave, there's somebody that's going to back him up in that position. And that's, I believe in bringing my employees forward. So anything that I see that's going to help them professionally, especially if I hear it's a great training, I will send our officers to it. And I have been doing that already since I've been in this position.
Examples of mentoring that you've done?
Without naming names and stuff. Yeah, so you know, being in lieutenant's position, there's I was in charge of the detective division. So the new detective came in and, you know, I mentored him in what we're looking for and how we handle, you know, investigating cases and the following up and then following up with the victim and how important that is. So we go over procedures with him and then I stay available through the whole time that he's in the position as well. You know, just meeting with my sergeants, since I've been in this position, I felt it was very important that I have monthly meetings with my sergeants so I can get a pulse of what's going on in the department and make sure that morale is not going one way or the other. So I feel like I'm mentoring them for if they want to be in this position as a lieutenant. They had something to look for. This is how you handle, you know, those types of meetings.
Thank you. Thanks.
Chelsea. Police community relations are particularly strained right now across our country. In your current role in the department, what steps have you taken to address issues of race inequity? As chief, what actions would you take to address these issues in our community?
Good question. I believe strongly in like the social media aspect of this job and that we need to be transparent and accountable. And I think that, you know, we built up trust with our community. If we show them what we're doing and they and they get used to seeing us and they know what we do. I started the social media program back in two thousand and nine. I created the department's first Facebook account, Twitter account and website. And at the time, nobody was doing that around here. And it's something I believe strongly and, you know, eventually I may have to pass that to somebody. I hope not to because that's kind of my baby. But everything you see on our Facebook page and and our website is is I've put out there. And I think that's important because I think the public, I should think, I know the public wants to know what we're doing and they want to see what we're doing. It's important to them and we want to show them what we're doing. And and that instills confidence and 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 they they build up trust with us. And I believe strongly in providing the information that we can give out. We get that out as soon as possible because I think that's important because so rumor doesn't stop immediately. So what we can give out, I plan to give out. And and I think that's very important. I believe also in a program that actually the previous chief had in place where it had invited a bunch of residents that were people of color in our in our town. And I was actually part of it and we would have them come in and we took again the tour of the station. And we met on a few occasions and we had pizza and then we wrote the bounce ideas off of each other. And it started right after the George Floyd incident. And I think it was a great segue into allowing everybody to come into our apartment and show them that we are your police department. Whatever's going on around the country, we are your police department. And that's that's not what's going on here. And just having that familiarity, I think is great. And so now when you see, you know, see everybody around town, it's they know who you are. And that's a program I can I plan to continue as well as with if.
Thank you. The mental and physical health of every employee within the department is critically important. In your current police role, what steps have you taken to address employee wellness? That's the first question. So there's two questions here. As chief, what actions would you take to support the mental and physical health of the Southborough Police Department employees?
It's always been one of the most important things in this job. When I went to Stonehill, I graduated with a double major in criminal justice and psychology. And at one point I wasn't sure if I was going to go to psychology or clinical, I mean, clinical psychology or criminal justice, just criminal justice. But clinical psychology has always been kind of like in the back of my mind and I use it in my job all the time. Whenever we have a critical incident that happens, we do a debriefing. And we make sure that the officer, we sit with the officer that went through the debriefing and that went through the incident and they're aware of our policy. We have a whole policy in place. Peer counseling policy with numbers to call. We can't force anybody to get help unless it's a fitness for duty situation, but we at least provide them with all the tools that they need if they want to to seek help after a critical incident. But mental health is, especially in today's times. I have my sergeants always checking with the officers, make sure everybody's doing okay. And I think that that connection with their immediate supervisor is important. If something is not going well or, you know, if I'm made aware of anything, then we we take the family approach and we bring everybody in and sit down and make sure the person's okay. And we do their job, but also able to to get through life.
It is often said you shouldn't take a job that does not scare you in some way, shape or form. What scares you about taking this job? Conversely, what are you most looking forward to? And where do you think your greatest learning curve lies? So it's three questions. Read it back.
It's it's funny. I'm not really scared to take this job. I've been doing this since February. I love this job. I've been building my whole career towards this job. I'm coming up on twenty-four years as a police officer. Eighteen of them have been as a supervisor. In the past three years, I've been as the lieutenant, which is basically the XO, like I explained, the operations of the administration. What am I afraid of? In taking the job, I couldn't tell you. I feel like I'm ready for it. And I can't foresee the future. Anything can happen. But I feel like I'm ready for my whole career to prepare me for this job. So. And then.
Where do you think your greatest learning curve?
It will be, I mean, I've already participated in a lot of the committees and gone to a lot of the different groups and everything like that. But there is going to be a learning curve for, you know, capital committee and then going to that SPAC committee and some of these other committees. I haven't had access to that yet in my previous role. I am getting that now. It's been great. Working very well with fellow department heads. Chief Achilles and I get on great, John Parent. And you know, that's so, but in the big picture, those are the areas that that there's there will be a learning curve and I have people I can rely on and that I can go to if I need help with that. So I can prepare for that.
What are your most important?
Leading the department to the future. I think that again, there's so much that we're in the future for this department and with everybody's with morale being as high as it is, I think we're going to go great places.
Lisa.
Thank you. What types of programs and relationships would you build with our schools and other community sectors such as the seniors?
I've already started, Lisa. Thank you for the question. You know, I started the at-risk program, which was, you know, I had sat down with Peg Leonard at the senior center and we talked about, you know, this program was stalled. It wasn't going anywhere. So I immediately started working on it with her. I sent her something that was already in place in Hopkinton and she sent back, well, what if we change the form here? And we worked together in collaboration and came up with this at-risk form. And then on top of it, we're able to incorporate memory. Those individuals suffering from memory memory loss issues like Alzheimer's dementia, but also autism. And we created this form that's basically a response form for when officers respond to the home. Certain triggers that the officers have to watch out for. Basically, it's a cost. It's all voluntary. Not forced on anybody if they want this in place for emergency response to their home, they can have it. In the schools, when I first got into the position, it was a lot of learning. And then right near the end of the school year, in June, I came up with the lunch take back program, which I had actually seen online from my hometown department. I thought it was great because it was something you could do during the school day without affecting curriculum for the school, for the school day. And my officers loved it. We had about twelve officers show up and serve lunch and and the parents, you know, parents are calling and just everyone had a great time. Chelsea came. It was it was so that these are the types of programs. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. If you see something that works, bring it to this department and bring it to this town. I think ideas are there for sharing. And, you know, that was something that I saw that I really felt like we could do here. And I have a great relationship with surrounding town chiefs. I know a lot of them. And I'm working, I'm looking forward to collaborating with them on trainings. At one point in Westborough, we had the active shooter training at the old movie theater that was in town. I thought that was a great training and it's stuff that I'd like to bring back now that COVID is done.
This is what I hope is a very hypothetical question. Assume that the select board instructs you to implement a new policy and you don't agree with this policy. You think it's a bad idea. What do you do?
I would request to have meetings with you. And I would have, I would just make sure that I have all the information on the background of why we want to put this policy in place. Once I feel like I had all the information and I could explain it to my department, I would I would move forward with it. You know, I've I would hope that as a department head, I would be able to give my opinion and my take on it. And from what I know of this board, I don't see that as being a problem. But I think it's important that if if it's something that's going to be unpopular, that it's work and work together. And then I would I would bring it back to the department. And then I would. And then I would start immediately with the meeting with my sergeants, because as of right now, with no lieutenant dead ones, they're going to bring the message down to the troops. Thank you.
So. The South Park Police Department will soon be implementing body cameras. What policies and procedures surrounding body cameras would you would be important to you as chief regarding this rollout?
So I already um reached, I was able to acquire nine different department policies for body worn cameras. Um, and I'm actively reviewing those to see what's what would work for our department. Some of them are bigger departments, some of them are smaller departments. So that's something that I'm in the process of doing. Um, but I always, I want to make sure that there's a system in place for. Obviously for the accountability and transparency, but also protecting privacy of the people that we encounter uh within the community.
Hey, last question. Uh, it's a long one. So stay with me. There's only one question at the end of it. I just got to get to it. Um, an effective chief needs to deal fairly objectively and consistently with members of the department and with the public. Any internal candidate brings a history of personal relationships with these department colleagues and with the public to the decision of chief. How will you ensure that these relationships, these existing relationships will not get in the way of your ability to work fairly? Objectively and consistently with the individuals and issues you will need to deal with as chief?
So I started in two thousand two. By two thousand four, I was promoted to sergeant. So I've been in a supervisor role. For eighteen years out of my twenty in South Row. Uh, I've always established. There's certain guidelines, there's certain things that you can do in front of me, there's certain things you cannot do in front of me. Um, I attend weddings with with the officers. I attend, you know, certain special occasions. Um, but it's not something that like I'm worried about. They know what my role is within this department. And my trajectory was always heading towards this. And I absolutely do not see this as being an issue within my department, especially now that I've been acting chief since February. Um, my guys have embraced me in this role and. Uh, immediately begin, you know, calling chief and 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 I'm, you know, they know that this is my role. This is, this is what I'm going to be doing for as a leader in the department. Uh, so I do not, I'm not worried about it at all, although um. I I've already established what my role is here and where that, you know, that disconnect is uh as a supervisor and as a leader. And there's, what was the last?
And that was the question.
Yeah, yeah.
There's only one question, that one.
Okay.
Okay, that's that's fifteen questions. Um.
Alright.
Well, I buy, didn't it? Um, okay, so um to wrap up, would you please take this opportunity to uh make a closing statement? Or to provide any information that you think would be beneficial for this board to know beyond what we already know this in your resume?
Um, like I said, you know, I've been uh I've been in this profession. I've actually had arrest power since I was twenty years old. Um, I worked as a summer special in Nantucket. Uh, I went to Stone Hill College and then I worked on Nantucket as a summer special police officers with full police power. Uh, back and forth for four summers while I was in college. And uh, you know, this, it's something that I used to walk the the foot patrol. And it was a great way to like, it really kind of got me started in community policing because. I was in full uniform, walking up and down Main Street of Nantucket, talking to people, um, and talking to the vendors, helping people with traffic. And it was the old school community policing. And that's the the concept that I brought to this job ever since. That was when I was nineteen, twenty years old. And, you know, so and then on top of it, so for twenty four years I've been in this profession, like I said, eighteen as a supervisor. Um, I'm at that point in my career where I'm ready for this leadership role in this position and the training that I've acquired, I I've seen in my resume. Uh, has prepared me for this position. Um, I have, I'll go into a personal life. I have a wife of twenty one years. Uh, to celebrate our twenty first anniversary. And I have three teenagers in full teenage mode, sixteen, eighteen and nineteen. That one in college. So my life is is, you know, is busy, but. Everyone knows that this department is my my priority on top, you know, with family, obviously family's first, but. So again, uh, I'm ready for this position. I'm ready for this role. I've already been doing this job since February. I've uh established some great relationships. With other department heads, uh, chief, like I said before, Chief Achilles, John Parent. Um, and I feel like. If I want to collaborate with anybody, I can do that immediately and I know who to go to. This, just like this morning, I was with Greg Martino, the superintendent of schools. And I was in the auditorium with the eight hundred teachers and as he introduced me as South Rose influence chief. And uh it's great to be a part of that. Be part of the community for that, you know, for that situation. So. Yes, so I am ready for this position if you choose to choose me for it. And that's all it has.
Thank you very much and thank you for going through this process with us.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, um, so. Everyone will recall that what we agreed to do when we first set up the process for this is to. Do the interview tonight, sleep on it, come back tomorrow night and vote, discuss and vote. Um, Mr. Purple, um, in his um giveaway said, what you may want to do is go ahead and ask some flexibility. So we have posted. Tonight's meeting so that if we thought we were ready to vote, no one wanted to sleep on it. Uh, we could go ahead and discuss um what we heard tonight and decide um whether we would want to appoint one of the two gentlemen as next police chief. Um, or we can do what we originally planned, which is sleep on it and come back at seven o'clock tomorrow night with that being the only item on agenda, no public comment, no anything. So, and I've also said that if anyone wants to come tomorrow night, they hold veto. So they that it's not going to be majority votes, because that's what we said we're going to do to begin with. Okay, so my question to all four of you is, by putting me is, does anyone want to come back, sleep on this and come back tomorrow night? So, bye. So you're ready to, you're ready tonight?
Yeah.
Andrew, Chelsea, yeah, Lisa? I really hate to be the naysayer in this, but I really want to. So Hassan's promise is going to get this on YouTube right away. Um, so I really do want to sleep on this. Um. Go back to listen to the interviews again and really think through this because it's such an, and I know you all agree, this is. So, um, don't be mad at me. Um, but I really would like to to take tonight to go think about it and come back tomorrow night.
No problem.
Okay. I hate to be. Uh, someone else wanted to do that. I have to be the only that we are here, but um. Lisa, is that okay? Okay, alright. Okay, so that's our plan. So then, um, what we're going to do now is go ahead to our second agenda item, which is reviewing the warrant as it stands. Tonight, I mean, it's kind of hard on us for us and then we'll do public comments after you do that. Okay? Alright. And we will have an executive tomorrow night. Yeah, so there'll be two agenda items, but. Yes, okay. So we'll do the executive session to start the process if we do appoint any police to tomorrow night immediately. No public comment.
No executive session tonight.
No, so that was there in case we were going to uh. Okay, so, um. Okay, so time's passing. October thirteenth will be here before we know it. Um, so again, remind us of when you want to go to the twenty first?
Twenty first, yes. So the the goal is that that you're meeting on the seventh, you will officially close the warrant. Um, and then um on the twentieth, you will sign the final version of the warrant, go to the printer on the twenty first. And uh should have that back hopefully within a week. Um, and then have that available for um for its committee's residents. Get ready for the meeting on thirteen.
Okay, and advisor has specifically asked me if you could post on your plans by one day because they want to meet on the twenty first.
Yes.
Yes.
But we can probably, yeah, we can probably do it that. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I remember those days. Extra day was very important. Okay, so let's just run through each article and kind of see what we think about for this stand. Um, so one, two, three, and one, two, three are all related. So the first one, of course, is the one we promised to go first from regular town meeting, which is the. Um, new trees by law. Okay, so I think we're just waiting for plenty to finish their hearing on this and say they're done, ready. And I assume you don't, no one wants to vote to a really note exactly what's coming. Yeah, so everybody agree that we're waiting till we see the exact forty from that one. I would kind of know what's coming for that one. Lisa, um. You agree? Okay, so you're muted. I can see your head nodding though, so.
Sorry, yes, I agree, Kathy, sorry.
Alright, so number two, of course, is scenic roads. Um, I, I mean, this one's pretty cut and dry. Uh, you know, either. You want to make them all safe roads or you don't. That's what, that's your choice here, right? The rest of the roads, other than the state roads. So I doubt this one's going to change very much as far as.
The planning board has been talking about some different options.
Okay, so we'll wait on this one too then.
I don't know exactly how strongly they feel about the choices. Marty Gilham was talking about some of the feedback they've got, so.
But you can think in the end, there's kind of two, well, three choices. You don't like it at all, or number one or two, you like it, yes, make them all that you can. Or number three, they kind of know about, which is actually try to figure out what scenic and make them scenic, you know? So door one, door two and door three. So we'll see. Okay, so we're going to wait on that one too. Okay, Chelsea, you want to talk about three you're working with?
Yeah, so Karen went out to bid um on the list of trees that we approved at the hearings. Um, and as of last Thursday, she had not received the bid and Mark, I don't know if you. Received anything.
So she didn't go out to bid. Oh. M A P C went out to bid and we became, we asked to be part of that. So when that bid is done, we will get a list of, here's the results. Here's what the vendors gave us and here's what the pricing is. And I believe if I understood her correctly, the pricing is going to come back per inch. She says, we've never bid trees like this before, so it'll be interesting. So. Given that we've got all this information, because you saw the charts for all the trees that we reviewed.
Yeah.
We'll be able to very quickly save pricing, size, pricing separate and put that together and then we'll have an idea of what it's actually going to cost us to move these trees.
Yeah. Do you have any idea of how many inches there are? Have you tried to edit it up? Well, I just wondered.
No, I haven't done that.
But we know it's the measurements, what B D H, rest dynamic, height, B D H. So we know what it is, right? It's on the spreadsheet.
We know what it is.
So you really could edit it up.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to, we have, I just, I like to know the ballpark is. Um, so.
We don't know price per inch, so.
I mean, um. We've got, there's a piece of land that my neighborhood basically controls. It's twenty six acres and we have to deal with trees a lot. And lately we've had, last two years, we've had a lot of trees and it's always been like a thousand to two thousand per tree. We thought we had a good price. So I assume we're talking at least hundreds of thousands here, you know, and I hope it's not much more than that.
Is this the M A P C process, something they're bidding for several towns together or is it just?
Exactly. So this is kind of like the process that C M R P C did for the self down transition plan for the ADA Title II. And, you know, we were getting involved and they said, well, we're bidding it for everybody. We said, okay, we're not going to do all the work ourselves. We'll get in, they help us apply for the M O D grant the whole night. So this is the same type of process. They're doing this for their for their communities.
And when do we think we'll have?
I believe we should have something this week. So, um, Ms. Gallagher is is taking some well, well needed vacation this week. Um, and uh, but we're keeping an eye on when those results become available because we can apply that information. So this is.
One question that has come up in the past on this is that some people believe that there's great value in the wood and the trees that they're taking out. And uh, have asked, do the bidders actually recognize that, certainly offsetting the cost for that, that part of the bid process?
Great person that asked that was you, wasn't it? I seem to remember your name was attached to that question.
It has been asked recently, um, and the answer was.
But I do think, I do think he did say that that is taken into account when they do bid. Because there, because there is, there is, there is a value.
Hopefully, the bidding process reinforces that as the opportunity for the bidders to to assign some value to that.
Sure, I agree.
These woods. Okay, Saint, or Mark, you want to talk about four?
Sure, Article four, um, if you remember, uh, at the um. Uh, last spring, just before the annual meeting, we were able to get um all but fire department unions ratified. Um, this board actually ratified the agreement, um, and the other fire union did not, so it didn't go for the town meeting. So we're still proceeding under the existing uh contract until there's a replacement um in place. Um, we've been uh meeting at the table. Um, I think that, um, you know, we have a a clear path forward. Um, I did say um that it would be a little embarrassing if we couldn't get this done. I think we're very close. Um, and I think that, um, and I'll give Chief Achilles credit, you know, and and help him to try to work through some of the um. Lingering issues that that I think, you know, helped us or prevented us from getting it the first time. So uh chief is is coming back uh this week, midweek. We'll meet at the end of this week. Um, I believe we'll start to uh get things in process. I don't believe I'll have anything for you to consider um on the seventh. Um, but we'll have something for you to consider um for ratification on the twentieth. I will not bring it to you until the union has ratified. So last time I brought it to you for ratification. You know, I thought, you know, we were there. I thought everything was all set. I wouldn't have brought it to you otherwise. So this time when the fire union ratifies it, I will bring it to you. I would expect no.
Alright, so we'll be optimistic.
Yes.
Right now, the next one, uh. Five to six have a connection. So five is, this is called the clicker article where um. We are going to test out clickers for the first time as far as some votes. Um, I'm not sure they're using for all those, but the ones that you think there might be a close vote. So we don't have to spend all the time doing, trying to count those. So we're going to try it. Um, Mr. Haverty and Mr. Samino seem to have come to a meeting of the minds as far as doing this. So, um, this is the language I was seeing right now. They both have agreed on.
That is my understanding. So this is, so the town court provided this to me today. Um, so I wanted to make sure you have the most updated language that you um that you're playing with. So. My understanding from Mr. Hagerty is that both he and Mr. Samino agree with this language.
Mr. Samino insisted um that, you know, the town approved this before he, he could have done this on his own, I think, said this to quit this, but he wanted to make sure the town voted for it. Before he agreed to. So this is.
He wants, I think he wants a clear direction. Yeah.
Okay, so um the plan is to use it for the first time at annual town meeting. And the next article uh funds the initial payment, which is to rent them to see if we're going to like them before we buy them. I think the purchase price is either thirteen or eighteen, I think it's seventeen.
I think, I think that. Go ahead.
I I think it's a option to purchase rights, so.
Total price, I think, is eighteen. You rent them for five. If you go ahead and purchase them. What you, what you paid to rent them goes toward the purchase price. So if you like them, your total outlay, purchase them will be thirteen. Um, and and just so the board knows, these are just placeholder numbers. Um, I see that the capital chair happens to be with us tonight. Um, but uh, but other than the clickers, the pavement management system, um, that that had been talked about here and also at Capitol. Um, that bid is um is due on. Wednesday of this week. And so, um, uh, probably early next week, um, we'll sit down and review those bids. And have a recommendation to the board for um award, obviously contingent upon funding. So.
Okay, so if five were to fail, and it's a, you know, it's a majority vote, were to fail, then we would uh pull the first part of six or definitely postpone. So that's why six comes after five, because you're not going to find something that they didn't, right? Okay, so you think that you'll have the bids, so we'll have this number firmed up soon as far as the pavement management system.
Correct, yes.
Fifty is is a guess?
I I think that's just, it it's a guess. It's, you know, I I don't know what the market for for these uh systems is now. Someone had had. Mentioned, I believe, that, you know, somewhere maybe around fifty.
Yeah, that's actually consistent. I've talked with several of these vendors over the last couple of years. And that is consistent with what I've heard, although that's not South Grove specific.
Right.
Generally speaking, thirty to fifty kind of numbers people have.
For the first year.
For for the first evaluation process and sort of getting the thing going.
But again, it's going to depend on size of community, number of road miles, all of those to some extent.
Yes, some of that, but then there's the software, then.
Sure.
Ten miles or thousand.
Sure. And again, we're not on the front edge of the wave anymore.
That's right.
Right? So this has been established and um, yeah, so I think that that may be reflected in the price.
Alright.
Long pavement management system?
Excuse me?
Okay, can I ask a question about this? So just. This is, this is topic has come up at various meetings. Um, the community compact grant, were we going to apply for that? Is that related to what? Something different?
I remember Karen saying that, yeah, she was gonna. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not sure if I'll let him say it. Well, I'll start the answer, and then Miss Hale can talk from some of the experience that we've had with community compact grant. Community compact grant has been good, um, to help us for studies and for, um, um, you know, for smaller implementation. Um, I'm not sure whether it could be helpful with this. I know that we went back and we took a look at identifying, you know, where our pinch points were in our record retention and trying to improve our systems. And, um, um, you know, we had gotten, uh, uh, Miss Hale had, had shepherded a, uh, community compact grant for that. And we had done the, done the, uh, done the report. We had money left over. We couldn't spend it on implementing from anything from the report. Um, so I'm not sure whether or not that would be something that, you know, we could use this for. We could take a look at this. I don't know whether there's, you know, there's potentially some history that, um, when you get the funding, I'm not sure if they would go to, uh, you know, to fifty thousand dollars or not. Um, but again, I don't know what the numbers are, and we could look at that once we know what the number actually is.
It really does help.
Is that related to the housing choice in N B T A communities? If we actually don't stay on track with that, is that one of the areas that are really kept money is going to be noted?
I think you're right.
I, I think those are going to create, again, pinch points.
Yeah, I think, I think that was specific, there's a list.
Eligibility, correct.
And that's one.
That's going to limit, that will limit your eligibility. Um, yeah, I agree with you.
All right, so that one's moving along. Um, seven, um, is YouTube.
Yeah, Lisa, do you want to speak to that? I know Lisa has identified something. First, we're meeting about this tomorrow.
Sure, Andrew. So I had actually pulled some language, excuse me, sorry, from another town, and, um, I think it's a great starting point. It's very brief, very succinct, and Andrew and I are going to talk about it on Wednesday. So we should have, um, hopefully some language to at least send over to Jay and get his opinion on. Does that sound about right, Andrew?
Yes, and I think that some of the, 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 what, the model that, uh, Lisa found, it was specific that the, the purpose of the all-time meeting is to focus on non-fiscal articles, which I think is the purpose.
Non, it's non-financial.
Non-financial. Um, I think an issue is going to be, should the bylaw have a specific target about, like, what week or when in the month it should be? You know, is it mid-October or early November, late October? I think that's one of the things we'll have to discuss.
Well, you know, um, and, I know I'm repeating myself, but, um, at the regular town meeting, um, advisory is going to tell the town what they think passing that budget will do to their taxes, right? They say, this is what, based on what we know, there's some more things they have to go into it. But we estimate your tax increase is going to be, you know, two, three percent, whatever. Um, I fully support the notion that the special town meeting should have nothing to do with money. Um, that that should have been out of the way with the budget, because I just think you're, you're, you're undoing what we told the, the, um, town meeting. And therefore, it's not fair for them to vote on a budget that they think they understand the tax increase, and then later on, shove some more stuff in it, and so that's really not the tax increases. And if you agree with that, then I think you've got more flexibility as far as when the special fall town meeting is, because you're not worried about, um, that's not possibility, as he's trying to finalize the tax rate, so that's right.
It's less of an issue if you, if you're able to maintain the non-financial, right? Then, Mr. Sodoli cares less, because it's not affecting, it's not affecting the tax rate piece, so.
So we're going, I know a few things, and then, and then maybe, for now, we just say.
I guess, I, I think they need to have a small amount of flexibility there. If something comes up, we do need to do a financial thing.
Too much, very time.
Yeah. That's how you define boundaries.
All right, so Sally, this one's going to get done, Lisa and Andrew, right? It's going to go, it's go, okay. All right, um, so everybody, you have the discussion on that one? All right, so the next one is the possible, um, proposal to increase the C P A surtax from one to three percent. So we haven't talked about that one, um, very much, so I thought we, we should really get into that one tonight, um, decide whether we think it should go or not, because we are going to have to. Um, it's going to be our article or our C P C's one. Um, it started with advisory in the last year and a half or so. Um, Andrew Mills was part of that discussion, so he at least knows about it, but he, I don't think he's talked about it with C P C, um, the whole committee. But he was very pleasantly surprised that we were even interested in doing this. Um, and the reason we were interested in doing it, remember, we talked a lot about trying to, um, enhance, increase non-lebby revenue. So that, you know, we try to control the tax rate, so try to, you know, you want to increase, um, the mill tax, because you've got people coming in, paying it from outside Southborough. Increase your state revenue, so again, you take the pressure off the levy. Um, so what's happened with the C P A, um, account is that over the last few years, the state, which matches a piece of what we generate locally, has significantly increased the pool that, um, goes into determine state match. They doubled the fees, so you, they doubled the B at the registry from twenty-five to fifty dollars a process. Um, and then the one from municipal leagues, I went from even more, ten to twenty-five. So the amount of money that's going into the state pool that they then disseminate to, um, match what we collect locally has increased enormously. On top of that, um, the state, the last few years, has actually just put in a pool of money, like, they put in twenty million dollars in, because it's enough money to budget to do it. Now, ironically, they agreed to do it this time, but because of this, um, law that's going to kick in, that's going to refund a piece of income taxes, that's actually on hold right now, but that's okay. So what we did on advisory, when we started looking at this, we did, um, we did some computations, and broadly, um, we're taking in right now about five hundred thousand dollars between what we collect locally with the one percent and what the state gives us. That's what we get right now, right? It's been going up, you know, it went down for a while. It used to be higher than it down, and now it's come back up because of this increase in fees, right? So if you were to triple the, um, surtax, go from one to three percent, you don't get just three times the state net, you get a bonus because you went to three. You only get it if you go to three. Two won't do it, one and a half won't do it. If you go from one to three, the state gives you more than just three times the one percent. Um, and it's about a hundred thousand dollars. So instead of collecting five hundred thousand dollars a year, we collect about a million and six, if we were to increase it from one to three percent. Um, so you say, well, okay, it's still increasing taxes. So, you know, you do the math, let's take a five hundred thousand dollar house, right? Subtract a hundred thousand, you've got four hundred thousand dollars, multiply times the tax rate, you've got sixty-four hundred dollars of taxes, then multiply that times one percent. So right now, at five hundred thousand, our house is paying sixty-four dollars, so they would pay three times that, a hundred ninety-two dollars, right? Still sixty-four, so that's what they go to. But if you're going to use that money anyway, and all you've done is shifted it from the tax levy to, to, to C P A, C P C, then you really have increased taxes, but instead, you've actually generated more money for Southport, because you've got that extra state match coming in. So what do we have coming up that we might need more C P A money for? Well, you've got quite a bit of, um, capital improvement projects on the, um, slate for Elgon Point that would probably qualify fields, et cetera. Um, we've got some other things that could be done in Southport we wanted to with this money. Um, so I think there is a good reason to think about doing this. I don't know if now is the time or, or your town meeting is the time to do this. To me, that's, that's discussion, do we really think we want to do it now? Because I think you're going to make a good case for it. When this passed originally, it didn't, it failed a town meeting, fifty-one to forty-nine, but they, and they did try to start off with a three percent, but it fell fifty-one, forty-nine. Then it passed because it was a ballot initiative, so it actually passed on the ballot at one percent the following year. So some residents got together, got, got on ballot, and then it passed. That's how we got it. There's a hundred eighty-nine communities in Massachusetts right now that have the, um, surtax, and seventy-five of those have the three percent. So we'd be, we, you know, it's almost half, and I'm quite happy, almost half.
I, I think the numbers are there. The, the challenge, I think, is that, uh, if the town can be disciplined in terms of spending that additional money for things that we would have done anyway.
Right.
The taxpayers come out ahead. If, in fact, we look at that as bonus money that we could spend on top of what we do, what we've advised then, then in fact, that does impact the tax rate. So I think that, to me, is the, the real choice, and I think that, uh, you know, uh, at least, you know, most of us are not going to be here for the next ten years or whatever in terms of doing that discipline, so I think it's important to reinforce that message that, uh, uh, that's part of the deal here, and hopefully, something towards would support that, uh, down the road, we can pass this. But I think it's great to get statements, an extra million bucks in state money, which is, uh, insignificant in terms of impact on taxpayers.
No, so you're, 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 I mean, you could, you know, you're a bottom C P S, you, you could do, you know, quite a bit of projects.
I don't think it's just discipline, though. I think you better see what you've got in projects and what fits in the C P A box, except, right? And that's the thing, too, and, and because, how many times have you been at a town meeting, or presidents have said, why can't we use C P A? Why can't, you know, and not understanding exactly what it can be used for. So, I agree, so whether it's capital or a combination of capital advisory and select board, take a look at what your planning has laid out for you, and whether you, you know, what you think will fit in there, and how that could potentially be used. I think that's really what's going to help make the case.
Well, and I also think C P C needs to come and explain what hasn't been able to be done, because they don't have enough funding, or they don't have people coming to them looking at the projects.
Control how it's used, too. So you need to understand their philosophy.
Right. I also think this plays into one of our goals for the share on the five-year plan, and looking at what, what the outlay is with, you know, things that are not C P C funded. We know we have a lot of capital things coming up that can't be C P C. So I'd like to see, like, the broader picture and how this would bring in, and have a more formalized plan on C P C projects.
You know, sometimes too, sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I just, I, I think it's definitely something worth exploring, but I think I worry in trying to get it done before October. We haven't had a conversation with C P C yet, and we haven't done any outreach to the public, and I think there's going to be some level of, um, having to sell this to people. I think people are just going to view this as their taxes are increasing, irregardless of, you know, the points you just brought up, Kathy. So my fear is, do we have enough time to do this and get this done before the warrant closes and before October's town meeting?
I totally agree with everything you said, because, you know, you don't want to rush into it, and then it fails, and then you, where are you? So, you know, and sometimes, too, if you match the projects with what you're doing and saying, you know, this is why we want to do this, because we really, you know, it's time now to pay our share of the new turf field out of Elgon Point, whatever. Um, and that's, that's a bad example, because apparently C P C won't do turf fields, right? So that's a bad, but something else there that it will qualify for. Um, so I, I, I think that's kind of where I'm falling down, too, that we really need to get C P C in here, you know, see what they say, because, um, they certainly will have an opinion on this, on decide who's, you know, if they agree, and then, uh, maybe look forward to trying to do this at the Gregor Town meeting in spring.
I actually agree also, but I think it, it, it works a little differently in the sense that I've heard C P C opine a number of times, that they don't initiate projects. They simply evaluate requests for C P C funding. So I think it's up to the groups like us, like the Capital Funding Committee, for example, and others who have projects in the pipeline, to come out with a plan and say, here's what we expect to do over the next ten years or whatever. And these things appear to be, uh, consistent with C P C funding, so let's take a look and see if we don't have enough to, to use to increment here, then maybe it's not a good idea. But I bet that there are a number of things that folks have on the, on the agenda that would fit, and that's, I think, goes back to the earlier point. Easier to sell to people, and here's, here's the purpose of it, and here's outstanding money for the average taxpayer as a package, as opposed to where it's looking for.
So, totally agree. I mean, I think we're all the same creature. We just need a little bit more time to get this fleshed out and do it right, so that we really are coherent and can make the cases to be made, because I think Lisa's right. We got to sell it and, and justify this and not just, um, um, act like we're trying to, you know, triple the, the, um, surtax for no, no reason.
Here's what you get for it.
I also think that this is something I, I would rather see on an annual town meeting. I just don't know what on here is going to attract a lot of people to come.
Well, that is, right, that is, so we need to put it on there. And so, because I, I think we do have that, well, is our corn still a hundred or twenty?
Yes, so I just, I would like to have more people weigh in on this one and get more buy-in, rather than, you know, I think if this had been on last year's, it may have been a little bit different. I just don't know what the, the draw is going to be on this one. Yeah, maybe, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm still a little worried about the, oh, this is going to happen for this one, because I just don't think there's anything going, or shutting out here so far. And I won't even call this, or shut, but this might bring people up, but I don't, maybe we do it. I still think we have the right idea. Let's do it right. Let's get C P C in here, and see, see what they think, and then, uh, decide what to do. This is not, I just, I very agree. Okay, so that comes up.
Yep. Here it is.
All right, let's see. Create a fund to replace trees that are removed. So let me start this one, Lisa, and then you, you take it up, okay? Um, so Lisa and I had a meeting not too long ago with Mimi Latrell in, in Mark's office to talk about this. Um, she, she really wants to make sure that we have a process in place that when we take a tree down, we replace it somehow, so like, maybe not there, someplace else, right? So at least one for one, and of course, you have to have money to, to buy new trees, and, um, you know, our eighty-five K budget that we've got deep deep in there can only go so far, right? Funds of arborists and so on. So, um, I, I think it's a plausible, mobile idea. I just don't think it's ready for prime time for this. Again, I'm trying to keep the money open here, so I, I think we should pick it up. I think we should, um, talk about it, but I still think it's an annual town meeting, um, time, because it's money. And this really could wait, um, and we really think through how to do it, um, and, and make sure that we get it for annual town.
So I met with Mimi last week on this, and, um, I think she has a lot of good ideas to get a policy in this to then dovetail into a maintenance article that would encompass replacing trees and ongoing maintenance of removal of trees. So having one larger article or maintenance article for, um, annual town meeting that would then turn over every year. Um, so I think she's just working through some things on her side, comparing what other towns do, and then we'll work on a policy first, and then figure out how much, um, we, she would want to do that for annual.
And that's actually what we suggested that day, because she was going toward a new monitoring fund, so we kind of tried to, not, because number one, we're even funding this. She's, she's talking about the D S, you're going to fund this.
Yeah.
So I hope that is off the table, um, because we don't need another quality fund, right? Um, but I think, you know, an article like John Karen has for that is probably, I just think it's not something we should do for this meeting, but we should do it. And the annual town meeting, we're doing all the budget stuff.
Any board is going to be okay with that?
I think I, I can talk, I can follow up with that with her this week, um, and ask her in her board to, um, discuss this at their next meeting.
It sounds like a similar rationale, we just had the C P A discussion, isn't it? Good idea, we think we need something like this, but just don't think we want to brush it, try to get it ready.
Right, and we want to keep some money off the fall town meeting, is you want the money to go to annual town meeting.
Right, and, and encompass it so that we're not forgetting anything, right? And making, make sure we think through everything that goes into, um, tree.
They need to figure out how much, too, so you guys have time to really think, we want to be funny.
Right, and we wrote, we looked at the last five years of, um, the, uh, the line item in D and W, um, as well to get a sense for arborist, tree removal, that kind of thing. So we're going through the historical data.
All right, Chelsea, that was of you.
Yeah.
All right, so, question mark on that one. Um, next one is the bylaw to establish the timelines and deadlines for warrant article submission.
I did a draft of this last year that got pulled, and this was, again, after a conversation with Mr. Haggerty, to provide timing for publication of the warrant, without last minute citizen petitions particularly, in a way that would also allow flexibility for citizen petitions in a reasonable way. And, uh, I continue to believe that would be useful from an administrative standpoint, but you do need to have it in the bylaw somewhere, because now there's no limitation in timing for citizen petition. For doing this one, you know, the day before, cannot be, because, uh, not be, right, administrative, with a variety of reasons.
Well, I thought that Mr. Townman told us that we learned something from him, which is, because we always thought, I mean, we cut it off, right?
Yeah.
Well, you're, we thought we could do that. They learned we can't, right? Um, that until the warrants printed, a citizen could submit a petition. Is that what we, that, that's what he told us, right?
Until, until you've signed the final warrant, it's posted.
So you couldn't do it the day before, but you could do it ten days before.
Correct, and the alternative to that is unless you have a bylaw that sets out the guidelines, then you can stand on that.
So this would be the draft, bylaw would be, big, closed warrant, would also be the big, closed, any citizens petitions.
close the warrant and also be the date to close any citizens petitions.
Um, I actually can't remember what I wrote down because it's more flexible than that, I think. But again, to create a process that's clear, that is reasonable. Prohibit people from doing things of reason.
So you've got a proposed bylaw ready to go?
I've got a draft I need to think about again, talk with Jay.
Okay. So you'll do that and then circulate it, so.
Yeah.
All right, so that's still a possibility.
Yes.
All right, number eleven, um, National Grid. So Mark, you want to talk about this one?
Sure, so, um, John Parent has been working with our, um, energy consultants um, and, um, is looking to, um, bring any EV charging stations out here to, uh, police side, the public safety building because we are, um, moving towards hybrid vehicles, uh, for the cruisers. And then, um, you know, I, I think that's eventually just going to lead to electric. Uh, and, um, looking to do that for no cost to the town. However, we can't do anything with it or get any proposals or anything from, um, from National Grid if they don't have the easement to bring the power up here. And, um, it's speaking with, um, town council. Uh, there's a couple of different utilities that you can do without easement. One of them is water, the other sewer, electric isn't one of those. So we need to go to town meeting for this. I think it's a pretty easy ask. We're not looking, um, to, um, to expend any money on this. Again, shifting our vehicles, um, uh, some of our cruiser vehicles to electric is going to increase some of our electric, but that's going to be offset reductions in fuel. So, um, I think that, you know, it's a benefit. We're seeing departments going this way. And I think we're just trying to, um, a few minutes ago, I said, you know, we're not on the front side of the crap wave with the paper management. I think we're closer to the front, you know, when it comes to, you know, some of the, uh, um, the hybrid and the, the electric vehicle stuff. Um, yeah, I don't think this is much of an argument. It's more of a procedural item, just to get the, the approval from the board to be able to do this.
I agree. Everybody agrees on that one.
Yeah, I agree with that. But a larger question, is this something that, uh, we should be thinking about for other locations? Like Town House, for example, DPW. I've seen cases where, uh, you have a third party come in and install the equipment and charge for the electricity. So the town presumably wouldn't have much cost for that.
Right.
Is that something that National Grid would do for us or do we have to go to other third parties to do that?
So I think that there, you know, I would, I would, you know, through Mr. Parent, I lean on the energy consultants to see if there are those opportunities out there. But the second part, so the first part of the article identifies thirty-two quartile and council suggestion was the second part, and such other town-owned locations, that's a select board may determine for a similar purpose.
But this would be for National Grid only here because of the way this is written? Or if XYZ company came in and said, I want to put charging stations at the, the, uh, Town House, for example. We have to grant.
Well, you're going to need, you're going to need to bring the power in.
National Grid's.
So National Grid's going to have to bring the power in, I think, regardless.
Yeah.
But it may be a third, uh, you know, third-party provider that is able to utilize that to, it doesn't need the easement because the power will exist. But you've got to grant the easement to allow them to become a project property, so.
Yeah, I don't know all the technical details, but it'd be great if we had a structure that allowed for.
I agree.
Others to come in.
Without having to do this every time.
Well, that's, so that's why council suggested that last part, which gives the board, you know, and whether or not town meeting is willing to give the board that latitude to be, to allow the utility to cut, to bring power in, you know, for this purpose.
I think they will. I mean, there's going to be a lot of people very happy about this.
I think so, too.
I think so, but again, I guess if I were doing it more generally, you might say a Massachusetts electric company or other power providers.
I don't know how wide you can make it without, you know, um.
Anyway, I, I support this certainly, but, uh.
But, but I, you know what? I will ask Mr. Parent the question as to, you know, I mean, what, even if we're having a third party come in and provide the service.
Yeah.
Would grid still need the easement? So it's not that you need to give.
Yeah.
You don't need to give them an easement to come into the property to do that, but you're going to engage with a third party to provide a service on your property.
And I think grid is the only one themselves of electricity. Uh, all of their other, uh, aggregators or whatever.
Well, they can control the transmission.
Yeah.
Correct, so they're the ones that are going to control, yes, they'll control that end of it.
Okay.
We know Kevin Barrington asked us in an email sometime recently, um, whether we were going to do this. He mentioned Marlboro and, you know, you left the park and you just put the coins in to do it. Um, and, uh, therefore maybe Marlboro, um, can help us here as far as how we, we, this is to make sure.
I, I think, I think there's some, you know, there's some possibilities for location. I think one of them we talked about is potentially library.
Yeah.
But I think we need to finish that project next door before we start doing something over at the library. So, um, one step at a time, and that's a great location in terms of accessibility from, you know, um, from a lot of, a lot of different areas.
So it sounds like we're done, there's another making as flexible as we can without, um, causing too many questions. Okay, so that's a good one.
Yeah.
All right, um, next one, um. Lisa, um, you want to handle this one as far as what? Well, first of all, are we? I thought that Shopsey was doing this, but I guess not, so we're sponsoring this one if it goes.
So Shopsey can't bring an article forward. Um, but the board's never really talked about this. I mean, I've heard bits and pieces that, that Jay Talaman had said one thing to Shopsey at a Shopsey meeting, but I, I, again, I don't know the full gist of what exactly they're looking to do. I guess there's some confusion on language because some towns don't require, um, CPC approval. You know, once town meeting signs off on the, uh, transfer into the buckets, that's it. It should automatically go into the trust fund. Um, I think there's some contention on this one with CPC. I think it's, it's a much bigger discussion, Kathy. Um, certainly Andrew's on Shopsey now. Uh, they, they've talked about pretty extensively, Andrew, if you want to follow up with Dorian even. Um, I've only, again, I haven't had a lengthy discussion about this. I just know that Jay Talaman had gone to the meeting and told them some things and I don't know that CPC necessarily agrees with it, so.
Jay Talaman told them that it was very unusual to do what we have done here. His experience, so.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing now, going to CPC bucket first?
Uh, CPC having approval.
For that bucket.
After town meeting vote, correct.
Yeah.
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 So is in the language of the current article that we need to look at differently? Or is it, is this an ongoing?
I assume, I think, and, and Lisa, you stop me when I get it wrong, um, or just stop me in general if I'm going too far. But, um, I think that the three articles that have been approved previously do require the, um, Shopsey or the trust to have to go to CPC with a proposed project or something and, and have CPC agree to release the money. Now, that language, um, you know, council will say that that's probably not how it's done, but that's how it was voted. So town meeting did so, this is, this is, this is perspective.
Yeah.
Not retroactive. If you wanted to do anything with those prior three votes, you need to put those back on and go back and redo those.
But I, I think it's, sorry Kathy, I, I think it's too that Jay saying the language as they go forward at town meeting is more restrictive than other towns do. Other towns just put the money into the Affordable Housing Trust every year instead of Shopsey. And I, I'm sorry, instead of the CPC. So I, I think this is a broader discussion, Kathy. I mean, I think CPC is going to have some very strong feelings on this before we have it out on town meeting floor. I would suggest.
Let me just say this, I'm sitting here saying, I don't get this, so.
I don't either.
He's not going to get it either if I don't, you know, so this is not something you want to try to hash out.
No.
Town meeting, right?
I agree.
I don't know, I don't know whether or not, um, whether or not this is something you try and address globally in an article that is not a CPC project and how bind, you know, and how binding that is. Because CPC, again, votes to bring projects forward with certain conditions and everything to town meeting. So is this best addressed in a CPC, you know, CPC project for shops, you know, for, um, housing money? I, I'm, I'm not sure what the correct path is for this.
I don't know that CPC is going to support this anyway because, I mean, how many projects, let's be realistic, how many projects has the trust done? We bought back Stockwell, um, you know, so.
That's it.
Yeah, since I've been on the board, Kathy, we, we took the right.
The only advantage of doing this is it's, it could speed things up, that's truly it.
Yeah.
The property becomes available.
Yeah.
You'd like to have money available to move.
Yep, you could ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I keep meaning to look, how much is in the Affordable Housing Trust fund right now, seven hundred or so?
Um, we just transferred one ninety-six, I think we were right around three, so maybe close to five, Kathy. I could be wrong, but I thought that's where we were at after Stockwell.
All right, you don't have to go back to town meetings to transfer it, you have to have CPC to vote.
Yeah, you.
The article has already approved the money. Yeah. So you're not waiting for a town meeting, you're waiting for a CPC, too.
I thought there was a delay in there.
So again, I think it's a broader discussion, I don't know that it's ready for town meeting.
Great, um, okay, the next one. I originally had a slight issue, I don't anymore. So this is our deductible, you know, we basically have a warrant article that we put money in to pay for any deductible that we have on any claims we have for our, uh, property insurance policy. So, um, when we go to town meeting, depending on what town meeting is, we don't always know what our insurance is going to be for the next year. It depends on the time of the meeting. Um, but if we did know it, um, and we've got that in the, uh, budget for benefits, which is where it goes. Um, you don't really have any wriggle room if you've got a bunch of deductibles you have to pay. And apparently we've had a kind of a rash of deductibles that we paid first part of this year, which is why this is, I don't care about this anymore, so this is fine. So there's going to put more money, you know, if we need it, we spend it, if we don't, it stays there. That's, I don't think there's any thing to get too excited about this one. Chelsea, you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But check it out. Um, okay, next one is by law, okay, do we know who's going to do this one?
I had spoken with Mr. Hagerty today and he is still taking a look at this. Um, we're not sure whether he's going to have something, um, something for this or not, but if he does, he'll have it very shortly.
Okay, so he pulled this one, you know, he had this, um, the, the warrant for regular town meeting. So, uh, this is really committed up to him, but it's going to go for, he sponsored it, so.
I'm not a fan of this one particularly. Concept is fine, but I think sufficient reflects.
We'll have a chance to, to see that. Are the next two are related? These are both from, um, um, possibility. Um, he wants money to do, uh, two things and he's going to fund it by pulling more money out of the overlay reserve. Um, he's going to pull exactly the amount of overlay. So my question, how much have you asked, what you will, is we can pull a bit more out, um, to help us with the other stuff. But anyway, um, so this will not affect the, um, the tax levy because he's going to offset the, um, cost with, um, revenues. So the net effect to the tax bills will be zero. Um, so. Okay. So, yeah, it's not a very exciting one, sure.
Send out the constables to round up.
Mine?
That's actually a question, but I had so, uh, particularly some of these articles have been, uh, hypothetical situation.
They walk out the door.
After the treaty by law, then it's, it's locked. You're not a hundred percent, I mean, a hundred people. Are there any of these articles that are going to have a serious fact that they're not active on?
I think consent would be.
But I think that's why we just lock the door.
I think, I, I, I think, I think Mr. Stivers is actually, you know, that, um, you know, because of the discussions of planning at the annual meeting. So the, really the two big articles, the big three articles are up front.
Right.
Yes, right?
Right.
And then after that, it's pretty administrative. Um, and so I think that, you know, this board, after you close the warrant and get everything, so now you understand the universe, really need to engage moderator in discussions offline as to, you know, consent list.
Consent the rest of them.
You know, and, and so that maybe you've got out of this, you know, say you, you know, what, sixteen?
We got rid of CPCs.
Now fifteen, you know, right? So maybe it's four, five or six articles that really need to talk about. And the rest of them, you know.
I mean, I, I also think after listening to advisories debrief of last annual town meeting and special town meeting and seeing a lot of the social media discussion, um, amongst, uh, people with younger kids that, you know, both can't go to a meeting. I think we try to advertise this meeting as like, this is a good one for you to try to come to because we'll be able to, you know, have some nice discussions about some of the things and clickers and, um, but it's not going to be a marathon event. So maybe, maybe we'll attract some.
One night.
Right, if you know it's going to be one night.
And it's like a trialier.
And it's a trialier, so maybe people will be, you know, want to try it out that haven't tried it before. And maybe we try to, you know, advertise special town meeting that way as, you know, come see how it is. I, I don't know, I, I know that was some of the feedback that I got is it's too long and, um, I think we're taking care of some things that we then don't have to have on the annual town meeting. Um, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to be optimistic, trying to get more people there.
We, we have to be, so I.
There's a separate issue in terms of, you know, other things we could do to, to both interests. In addition to the usualists.
Yeah. Right. But just to be honest, there's just not a lot here that is going to, um, pick anybody's interest besides maybe the trees. Trace and Chelsea would, do you want to ask them, or if they would move it? Down? Nope. I don't want to ask them that, I promise you that, but we will keep it at the beginning.
Well, I think that the suggestion of a consent article.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this, this moderator has been pretty aggressive with his consent list and I think has done rather well. If you go back and take a look at the track record over the last several meetings.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that, you know, as long as the articles in, in question, you know, are not controversial and everyone seems to pretty much be in agreement with them, I think he's willing to put them on there, you know, and if the sponsor assents to it, to put them on there and try it. What the worst thing can happen is someone says they want to talk about them, they kick them off.
I don't see a lot that can, you know, and that's not my decision, but it looks to me like there are a lot of here that really could go on consent. Um, I think you got, you better try to keep Article twelve out of here. Um, so I think that's a great idea.
Maybe a pitch at town meeting for your product experience, et cetera. Media is not administratively, so don't desert the ship here, it's going to be brief.
Right.
Let's try to get it back. I think that resonates with a number of people.
Right.
And I think if you, if you're looking to try to set the table as to what a special town meeting will look like and what we expect it to be, people should understand this is going to, when we're going to handle a lot of those non-financial articles. So it's not sexy and exciting with dollars. But, but there are things that are important to how we do and what we do.
Maybe publicize that concept fairly aggressively.
It's going to be quick, this is not a, you know, four-hour-plus meeting at all. That will help a lot.
Now it is, but.
Well, I was talking about, you know, if somebody knew, it's two hours versus four. This makes a big difference for people who are trying to get kids in bed, whatever, um, trying to get to work in the morning, so, um.
Right.
All right, okay, so we've been, so everybody's happy for everyone's chance to score.
Yes, yeah. Having a jerk, yes, very happy, yes.
You had a hand up earlier, but.
We had, we had a hand up during the, um, interviews, I'm Kevin, I'm somebody. So I don't know who it was. Anyone, maybe it was accidentally. Okay, I think that's it, if we agree. Okay, so any public comment? Jason, Kevin, and Mercy. No hands up. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right, roll call vote, Lisa.